All right, it's six o'clock. Let's go ahead and call meeting to order, please. Rock on.
Pasco?
Here.
Nielsen?
Here.
Delway?
Here.
Stirk?
Here.
Just person is absent.
Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We will acknowledge the open meetings act poster that is posted on the wall by the south entrance above John Quincy Adams' head. Wendy, adoption of the agenda.
I would like to move to adopt the agenda.
Certainly.
Call for vote?
Motion carrying three to zero.
Approval approval of consent agenda items.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda items.
Certainly.
Call for a vote, please.
Motion carry, three to zero.
All right. Public hearings. Three DC addition. Public hearing on the DC addition preliminary plat. We will open the public hearing at six oh one. Um, is Mike going to talk? Oh. Yep, it's to state your name. And address for the record. Join. Top one. Top one.
Josh Larson on behalf of DC Development. Um, we went through this process last May and um, was that yeah, twenty twenty-four. Took us too long to get all the improvements done. So this Lancaster County put a sign off on it as you guys already did. So we had to wait and had to go through the process. Again, now that all the improvements are done on the development, so. Any question?
Mike, do you have anything you want to say?
Uh, yeah, I can add on to this. I'm Mike Palm, the city of Waverly, building inspector zoning administrator. As part of the review process on this final plat. As Josh mentioned, it was approved, so I guess kind of bunch all this together, the final, the preliminary plat, the zoning change to limited industrial and the final plat were all approved in May of last year. Now, as you can see on the map, there is a line that runs diagonally kind of on the northeast corner of the proposed zoning change area. Running through a couple of blocks, that is the extraterritorial jurisdiction between the city of Waverly and the county. The county is on the right hand side there, east northeast of our jurisdiction. Because of that, the county had to, it was a joint approval process between the city of Waverly and the county. The county required the city of Waverly to approve the preliminary plat, the zoning change and the final plat prior to the county signing off or on their approval. So we went through our approval process. When it got sent over to the county, they had an additional review process and had comments after the county planning commission had approved the preliminary plat. Uh, one of the conditions was that all the improvements, which is mainly the grading and the roads and the signage were all completed and installed prior to approving the final plat and signing off on it. Believe the reasoning behind that is because they don't want they wanted it all done in in one construction period as opposed to in phases as they were selling lots. So they didn't want pieces of the road to be completed while one lot was being sold and then you know, putting a debt and sign up waiting, having this process take, you know, more possible years to complete. So I believe that's the reason behind it anyways. Because of the amount of time that it took, uh, per Waverly zoning regulations or subdivision regulations, excuse me, after a hundred eighty days of the approval of the final plat by the city, if it's not filed with the county, it becomes null and void. And so legally, it seemed like the right process was to just to go through the normal process again, send it over to the county once it's approved by the city and then it will be approved by the county. So there was minimal changes other than one of them. One of the comments the county did have was about the drainage, mostly along Mill Road on the north side of the development. Now, essentially, they added a hundred foot wide section there for water detention during storm events. And so what it does is slows the the water flow off of the development. It allows it to pool up basically in that area before it heads into the right of way area. So it doesn't overtop the street. So what that did was the only change from the original plat then, as far as the actual lots are concerned, it shifted everything a hundred feet to the south. So that south lot line is now a hundred feet further south than what the original plat showed. Other than that, the lots are generally the same size, they're all over three acres. The alignment of streets did not change other than the the east west street, I believe shifted again approximately about a hundred feet to the south, but made all the engineering requirements. So really, there wasn't any more for the city to review. It's mostly it's we kind of have to go through the process again legally in order to to have it approved for the the final plat to be legal when it's signed. Any questions?
What parts of it were null and void? Was it just the approval of the plat?
So the final plat has to be per our subdivision regulations. When the final plat is approved by the city and signed, it needs to be filed by the applicant within a hundred eighty days. And if it's not filed with the register of deeds, then it's considered null and void. And it's been well, well arraigned now, so that, you know, so I said, let's just act like it didn't happen and do it again real quick, so.
So, so there was comment being that the vote was before a year ago was on the plat and on being moved from agricultural to light industrial. Did both those things become null and void or does that other action?
Well, the other, so the other thing that happened here, because the footprint of it changed, we had added additional a hundred feet. So what would happen then with that zoning change that we approved? It increased that footprint, so the original legal description on there is now changed. And so we could maybe go back and we would have to rezone that little hundred foot wide section all the way across or you know, in this case, since nothing was ever filed with the register of deeds, it's not legal anyways. Now it's just in one lump area. It makes it cleaner. So the prelim plat, this is not the prelim plat technically that we approved, even though it was just a very slight variation. It did change, so the other one, like I said, the the other plat was never filed. This is technically a new prelim plat. So we figured we would just go through the reapproval process. And that's, yeah, that's the route that we decided to go.
Thank you.
That it?
Thanks.
Fine.
Any other questions? Any other comments? All right, we will close the hearing at six ten. Let's go to consideration of approval of DC additional preliminary plat.
I move for consideration of approval of DC additional preliminary plat.
Certainly.
Discussion. Okay, call for a vote, please.
Motion carry, three to zero.
All right, now we will have a public hearing on rezoning of that same property from agriculture to limited industrial. At six eleven, open at six eleven.
I have a question.
Yeah. Can you, yeah, can you state your name and your address, please?
Jim McGill. My mom owns the ground catty corner from the property and to the northwest. And a concern I have is when improvements are made on a property and these people may in fact want paved roads to their locations. Owners along a paved road sometimes get charged for that that paving that was none of their doing, they didn't, they didn't ask for it, they didn't want it, they just I have a feeling that might happen, just speculation. The people with this, that are gonna buy these lots are probably gonna you know, ask for that to happen sometime because it's a gravel road coming from the east or the the west. And I'm pretty sure they won't pay one sixty-two because that's different, different area, but who knows? But that's a concern of ours. That could be an issue that we run into down the road unexpectedly. It's our, our ground is farm ground and it will continue to be farm ground in the foreseeable future. My mom's ground, excuse me.
How is her, my brother?
She's good.
Moving yard right now.
You are?
She is. And she uses a string trimmer too, so she's, she knows how to take care of things. But we're just here to ask questions and to see some things and be some concerns. Because that could be down the road, you know, this has been farm ground. One of my customers has farmed this for sixty years before this and it got sold and to a bad, and so that's changing the outlook and the the mix of property use and those kind of things in the area. It's a concern. I've been here back at Waverly since eighty-seven and I've worked with this farmer all that time. And the water drainage off this quarter that goes north is really poor. This is gonna be a lake down here in the area east of the, so I remember cornstalks plug up that culvert and it looks, it exits to the the north. And I think you did raise the topography of these lots as far as I know. I think that watching I go by for the time it was being developed, I think they did raise the the ground up higher, but it's just, I've been around this property since about forty years now, watched it when it floods and when you get big rains and water puddles up there doesn't get out to the north very well.
Jim, you raise a point. Mike, did they do a drainage plan? Can you address that issue?
Yes, and they do have the drainage plan on the, in the preliminary flat plans. So there was quite a bit of grade work done to raise those sites in the roadway. If you go further to the east, that, so that blue area indicates a floodplain. It's a zone A and they did include a on the final plat, there's, there's included a drainage easement there that's spelled out. You can't, it's kind of hard to see because that's, but you gotta zoom in more towards the
Give me a landmark to go to.
To the east of where the limited industrial is, go to the ag lots where the blue floodplain area is.
Not here?
Yeah, zoom in right where your cursor is.
Okay. I'm gonna put a drain easement.
Yeah, so there's a drainage easement there that is included in the plat, so what, a couple of things they did was there, there was some, I know there was a little bit more excavation to the east of this out there and part of that was to help with that additional water pooling so that, and and part of it was requirement so that it doesn't drain excessively off of the site. And so if anything, theoretically, it should help the drainage on that site because I know that that is, that's an undersized culvert right there.
Yes.
And the the one to the west of there, the existing one is also undersized, which is part of the reason why the so these new ones that they're putting in here just to the south that, that area, if you drive over there, you can see it, but it's a fairly good sized detention area. It's designed, it's designed to flood essentially or hold floodwater before it reaches the waterway because we know that that is gonna be slow going under that street. And so it's, yeah, it's, it's designed to hold that under, I mean, there's only a certain amount of rain you can hold eventually. If it's overtopping that, there's gonna be some other issues in the area, but for for your typical like fifty, hundred year storm events, it's gonna, it'll easily suffice. And it will actually help improve the drainage or overtopping of that road right there should, so.
Now, the owner of this ground to the north is the guy that used to farm this to the south and Kelco is the name of the farm, but I think it's two, son and the daughter of the original owner, but the cross, the culvert that goes there, this one on the the cross, the crossover.
Yeah, the cross.
The drainage on the north of that is poor too.
Yeah.
It doesn't, you can have all the engineering you want on the property you're talking about. But if the property around it isn't able to take it and get it out of the way, you're gonna have a bigger puddle.
Yeah, and part of the, so one of the main requirements in any new development is you're not supposed to create, you're you're not supposed to increase the net runoff from the site. Now, it's not that you can't decrease it, you're not supposed to increase it in the fact, in the case of property. So part of the, and and this was the county's, since it's their right of way technically, this was their comments, they wanted that retention or that detention there because they did not want to calculate that addition, the right of way ditch in their drainage calculation because who knows when improvements will ever be made to that street? I mean, likely not gonna happen anytime soon, but you don't know. Yeah, that's like you said, the 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 city, so this is, part of this is in our our planning jurisdiction, but it's not in our corporate limits, so anything outside of our corporate limits that tech, that that then goes on the county that right of way does. So that was all the county right of way is doing, so if anything's to happen to that road, it's likely gonna be the county until the cities actual corporate limits reach that. And it's annexed, but at this point, we have no plans to annex out that far. It's likely gonna be quite a while, so.
If it would, your face, my shut in there.
Yeah, go ahead.
Good, not good. If this does get developed more, what is the rule, what is the normal rule about a landowner having to share the cost of paving?
Jim, you're right, that is something that happens fairly frequently when they're, the argument is, I'm not asking the people to agree, is that the adjoining landowners, the value of the property theoretically goes up because they now have a paved road in front of it. It may not, it's not gonna help your farming, right? But it does help if someone wants to develop it. But since it's not currently in our corporate limits, there's no intention to annex it, it's a county issue, right? It's more like it's been by the payment.
Yeah, the city, right now, this isn't a city issue, it'd be more, like every, all the improvements that they made here on this development are outside of the right of way, which is basically owned by the county. So anything, yeah, once you get beyond that, any improvements to that road, they, you know, you'd have to talk to Lancaster County.
Mark, is that county the same thing we do? Sure.
Yeah, and it's, they can, yeah, that's one option, especially since counties especially are kind of tight on their budgets. So that is what they do, you're right. But if it be the county, at least as it stands now, that would be doing that, so you might keep an eye on on their agenda and see what they're doing.
If our, if our value goes up, so do our taxes. Which is a two edged sword, you know? And taxes right now on farm ground are terrible anyhow and farming is not a very profitable enterprise right now for anybody. And so it's more taxes on the same production is kind of hard, but that, but I really would stress the need for needing to have ways to take the water and get, it has to go away somewhere. You just, you can do all the improvements you want here. If that water can't get away quicker, I seen cornstalks plug up this culvert right here and it backs up a big puddle on Lonnie's field when he farmed it and
And at this point, I mean, that, that's the risk that they're taking now as as new owners of that land, so we are, I mean, it isn't a map floodplain there, especially the one to the east. That, and we know, we already know that's not very good drainage going across, but the like places legally, their requirement is not so much puddling up on their own land, it's how it affects the adjacent property. So it's technically that landowner, they, all that responsibility lands on them. If they want to change some of the grading to help with that, they're allowed to do that. If anything, over five acres, they gotta get a grading permit, but as long as it's, as long as it's not increasing the base flood elevation within that floodplain and essentially if you're taking out dirt, you're not gonna be increasing that, then they, they're allowed to to do that if it's gonna help, you know, help, help from, help keep water running out the site or increasing that net runoff.
Where is their retention pot?
Well, there's, there's two really. So we dug a thirteen acre borrowed pit. And so that's, that doesn't show up on this plat here because that came in after.
So go, keep, keep going down Stephanie, going down, yeah, right there about where your cursor is. We did a thirteen acre pond essentially, eight foot deep, so that's all gonna catch water. And then also, it doesn't show this on there, but the county did where that culvert you're talking plugs with cornstalks. We had to dish that out so it holds water on our property before it goes over to your property as well or.
The other owner, yeah.
Theoretically, the, the, the purpose of mine is to slow it down so that it's not, before it hits the property line, so it's not increasing flooding onto adjacent properties is.
First thing I wanted to just to bring up the concerns.
Yeah.
We're, we're, we're across the road, ten foot across the road to our property, so it's a concern of ours. Our property is actually a little bit high in elevation compared to this farm of Lonnie's, so it's not gonna get onto our property, but it's a concern of ours. And the paving down the road with the, here's, here's a bill. And I go, well, I didn't ask for it. And that could be an issue that we are gonna be, you know, and also I've worked with Bill Bevins for years, I worked, he worked for him when I was in high school. The smell coming off those buildings is real fun. And the property people over here might have to work with that, might be surprised how good it smells. And so I just wanted to bring that up.
You know, when they pave the road, all the people that own land along that road get to vote or send a letter in that they're against it. And if they're over fifty percent say they're against it, then then you don't have to pay. Then then it doesn't get, it doesn't get paid or the county's gotta pay it all.
Well, there's two of us and if one of us doesn't want it, that's, that's fifty percent.
Well, fifty percent of the total paid.
Okay, okay.
I mean, that's something to think about.
Yeah.
Jim, I wouldn't anticipate that's happening anytime soon.
Well, they, they told us that they were gonna pay one sixty-two thirty years ago. Clear to the county and I'm glad it hasn't happened, but times when it should happen, but it's just funding those kind of things. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You guys can come to every meeting if you want. I'd see you very often.
I'm gonna have Irma come here.
Yeah.
That does things would not be good. Obviously she can't hear you, but she'll talk.
I can relate to that, I don't think I'm gonna get it.
All right, anyone else? All right, we will close the hearing at six twenty-five. Let's do consideration first reading of ordinance twenty-five twelve to rezone from ag to limited industrial. Mark?
Yeah, do we have a?
We need to.
Oh, yeah.
I'll make a motion, consideration first reading of ordinance twenty-five twelve, rezone portion of property generally located south of Mill Road and west of North Hundred and Sixty-Second Street from agricultural district to limited industrial district.
And it's twenty-five twelve, an ordinance, City Waverly Nebraska, rezoned tract of land located in the west half of the northeast quarter. Irregular tract lot thirty-four and irregular tract lot twenty-nine. Section ten township level in north range eight east of the sixth principal meridian in Lancaster County, Nebraska, from agricultural AG district to limited industrial ally district.
Any discussion?
I just wanted to share thought or an opinion anyway, absolutely nothing against the the development and all the work you've done there. I really appreciate that. As I looked at the the future land use map and things like that, the north section of town would continue to kind of carve out areas that are limited industrial and that's probably gonna limit our ability to add commercial or residential to the north side of town. And I know in the future land map that that wasn't there, but that is a large section of land out there to that northeast. And as we rezone from agricultural to limited industrial, it's gonna be more and more difficult for impossible maybe for commercial or residential to wanna move into there. And I know that's not the intent based upon the what future land use map, but
So Mike, Mike, might need to address some of that, I know historically, also, I mean.
I guess, yeah, so when we did approve this the first time, it it does comply with the future land use map or for the comp plan. If, during, you know, even before we approve a new comp plan here in the next ten years or whatever, it can always be amended if that's something that the city council or planning commission feels the need to do or they feel like there's a desire to do that. At this point, the one thing I will mention, the the types of properties are already out there. One is the smell from chicken barns. You're probably gonna have a hard time convincing a residential developer that they're gonna wanna put houses out there. So that, that was kind of the intent, I think.
But the bigger issue is flooding, right?
Yes, you run into more flooding. As you can see, the closer you get to Salt Creek, you're into a lot of floodplain, floodway. As you move out of the of Waverly's ETK there, the extraterritorial jurisdiction, some of those flood maps are not as detailed as well, so let's consider a flood zone A flood, flood zone, which is not as detailed of a map, so there's a little bit more engineering and that you have to provide to the city in that case, if you wanna develop that, there's, you have to show that you're not gonna have more than a one foot net rise, any development in the floodplain. So I mean, it's usually, unless you're just taking dirt out, it's usually wise to, I mean, as a developer, that's just adds more costs, it's usually wise to stay out of those areas, so that was, that was another big one. Yeah, as far as the rezoning, I I think if if there are, you know, maybe more in the east, but the further north you go there, I I don't really see that being a whole lot more other than
No, I'm thinking further to the south as you get closer to highway six.
And that can always be, if we have, there are, you know, back behind Miller's lumber now, you know, you have a couple of houses there. There is potential there. But like I said, that, that map, that land use map is a guide, it's not necessarily set in stone, so it can be amended.
Yeah, and and what I'm saying is the decisions we make today would impact the opportunities that we have in the future to do potentially anything with that if if we ever decide it. Not that I'm against that, you know, section at all being limited industrial. Not that I'm against that, you know, section at all being limited industrial. I'm just saying it's going to start there, and I'm sure their development is going to add more sections. You can see it on their, their map that it's probably going to be, I think, four sections total. As it continues to move further south, it will have more.
And like I said, there's quite a bit of floodplain east of what they're proposing right now. And you're going to have a hard time really developing much there. Like I said, there's going to be a little more extensive engineering that goes into that. Those floodplain maps are not as detailed, it's not a zone AE, which is a more detailed study than a zone A. So there's, like I said, there's more documentation they need to provide in order to, to get a floodplain development permit approved, so.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm not saying I'm against moving that direction with the property now. I'm just saying as there's additional reiterations of, you know, want a new plot, more ground, to limited industrial, that continues to, you know, creep further south, which I suspect it will, that could ultimately impact the ability to do anything or do something along that highway.
And as, you know, and that's something like as we, that's just something to keep in mind as we move forward. Like as not only as planning commission, but as city council, it's good to, I guess, kind of keep in, keep in contact with them or kind of know what they're thinking. But that'd be more something like if a private developer came along and they looked at that piece of land or someone, the land, the current landowners wanted to sell it, a portion of their land off. And, you know, maybe a residential developer comes in in the future and sees that and they want to change something. Well, that's, at that point, we would probably look at it and say, do we want to change our comp plan now? Or, you know, do we want to make any amendments to it to match it? Does that look like it's feasible to have, you know, a good residential development? And like I said, we go through this same process, they'd have to have a preliminary plat, show basically what, what the overall development is going to look like, you know, get the zoning change of it's, yeah. So we just kind of start the same process over again.
The, this section that they have built the drainage ditch in, that will always be there? Like they won't be able to develop that, or they, if they wanted to, they'd have to push the water somewhere?
Well, technically you can develop in it. The, the, now that there is a dedicated easement for it, nothing can be done within that easement. That has to remain a drain, or it remains for drainage purposes anyway, so you can't obstruct that. Because that's basically where they, they did that strategically because it kind of, it follows the natural drainage path of it already. So that, that has to remain a drainage area. Now, on the sides of it, if they're able, not, like I said, it's a zone A floodplain. There's quite a bit of documentation they would need to provide before they're ever allowed to get a building permit for that area. Because they got to prove that whatever, whatever development goes on, it's not going to raise that base flood elevation by more than a foot. So, and then it can't, along with that, it can't affect drainage on adjacent properties. It can't, or it can't increase the net drainage on adjacent properties.
What if it does? Like what are the? What happens if it does?
Well, you know, most landowners would have, they would have legal.
Becomes a private dispute?
Yeah.
Someone has changed their topography whereby they're draining more water on your property, you have a claim against them.
Yeah, so they, yeah. So better, probably better question.
I don't know.
Any other questions?
No, I don't know if this is the time to ask this, but did we want to do suspend the re-reridians?
Oh, yes, that's what I was also going to say. I would recommend that we do specifically for the zoning change. I'd like to get this ordinance filed as soon as possible before the final plat is signed by the county and filed, mostly due to the legal description of it. This, there aren't many references to the DC edition in the, in the legal description for the zoning change ordinance. If this gets, if I were to try to file this after the final plat is filed, that legal description does not exist anymore. So I want to get this filed as soon as possible to avoid that conflict.
So we just have to make a motion to do that in a second.
Suspend the rules, waive the three readings.
Yeah.
And make a motion to suspend the rules and waive the three readings.
Okay.
So we need to vote on the suspension of the three rules and move into final. Motion carried, three to zero. Okay, now we need a vote on the rezoning of this property from ag to limited industrial.
Third and final.
Third and final, call for a vote please.
You know, Scott was really good at elementary procedure in high school. As you go, we're doing this on.
Motion carried, three to zero.
Mark, I have a topic that needs to be said.
Waverly used to run that state competition right along the road.
Yeah.
In the old days.
Sarcasm, women, these good sarcasm.
All right, okay, so let's go to public comments. Is there anyone here from the public who would may like to make a comment on an agenda item? Oh, wait, we're going to do the final plat, aren't we? Oh, did I skip that?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, I'm so sorry.
We have one more public hearing.
Okay. All right, so let's do a public hearing on the DC edition final plat. Let's go ahead and open that at 6:37.
I think the irritation is.
Okay. Nope.
Nobody's going to finish my drink.
All right. Yes, I know. Oh, all right, let's go ahead and close it at 6:38.
I would like to move for consideration approval, resolution 2513, resolution for the DC first edition final plat, property generally located south of Mill Road and west of North 162nd Street.
Sir.
Okay.
You ready to call for a vote?
Yep, call for a vote.
All right. Motion carried, three to zero.
Just fine without me.
Go sheriff.
All right, now public comments, come on up, Mr. Delapoy.
Hello, my name's Donald Delapoy. Just going to bring a couple of concerns. First of all, just thank you for all your work with the fire station and lights on Ambly Road. Appreciate all the work you're doing. My first concern is around golf cart safety. I've noticed around town, a lot of drinking and driving with golf carts. I think the community just thinks that it doesn't apply to golf cart driving, but.
Not for golf.
Yeah. Yes, so there's a lot of people just choosing to openly drink on their golf carts and everything, and it seems just to be a dangerous idea. A lot of underage driving too. See lots of kids driving around golf carts and then also unrestrained children. Kids either just here or riding in the back, just with no restraint. A lot of them are pretty young, usually under five. So there's some safety concerns there. Maybe looking at adjusting some of the city ordinances or maybe enforcing that more. Next is community appearance and some level of service for pedestrians. Noticed a lot of blocked sidewalks with vehicles or trailers that are parked there pretty consistently. And so if you're ever wanting, I went for a run the other day and I hadn't basically just run on the road because there's no option around sidewalks, you're just constantly swerving around cars and stuff. Also, a lot of parking in lawns and along with like dead storage and clutter with vehicles that just have flat tires parked on streets outside of houses and stuff, and things that you can just tell have not moved in a very, very long time. Along with mowing and weeds that are unkept. One example of this right now is the new fire station property. I know nothing's there right now, but it still doesn't look very good because there are very tall weeds and stuff, and you can just tell that it's not really been kept.
On our side or on the other side?
Your side.
Okay.
Yes. So that was one of them. Another concern is that a lot of other people that I've talked to on the committee brought up as well is engine braking on 148, especially in the mornings. Coming down the bridge, a lot of trucks just ignore the sign for no engine braking, and it has been very disturbing to the residents in Evendale and the neighborhood across from Hamlow. I don't know what that's.
Riley.
Riley issue. And then I have steep drop-off on 148 for Waverly Ridge Estates. I don't know if you've driven along there recently. They did some regrading and it has gotten to be very steep when you're driving along that, and there's no room to pull off or any shoulder anymore there. So I just think that's very dangerous with a high level of an accident. Maybe some options there would be to have the developer put in a guardrail to lower speeds there or to maybe do a little bit of regrading there to give at least a little more of a shoulder so if a car needed to pull off, they had that ability to do so, especially on that busy road where there's not a whole lot of room. And then also just to be able to keep that in mind too for future developments. I don't know what the grading will look like yet for the new Anderson North addition as well, but just to keep that in concern, in consideration for that. Then I'll end with just two questions. One is what is the policy on receiving quotes slash bids for work items and large expenditures for the city?
So because this is not an agenda item, we really should not be discussing it. That being said, I will explain from a legal perspective what the answer is, which is as a city of the second class, there are certain public works projects that we have to go through a bid process. Otherwise procurement requiring X number of bids is simply those requirements don't apply to a city of the second class. Nevertheless, historically, the city has done so because it's in the city's best interests.
Okay. And then the last one is what is the policy on how late items can be added to the agenda for city council meeting minutes? There's been two times now which community members, while I've just been sitting in the back of the truck, they felt something was added to the agenda last minute. One was last meeting with the fire station topic, and there's also one with the rezoning. So I was wondering what the.
24 hours.
24 hours, okay. So I want to maybe suggest that the city looks at maybe extending that just because I don't feel like that's fair to the community, especially if you're somebody who's very busy and they have a very strong opinion about something, they only are getting 24 hours notice if it's added to it. I just think there've been some people that have come that have been very passionate about that and that I think could give them more of an opportunity to plan what they want to say. That is all, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
You can say something, as me, I can answer.
Okay. I live on 145, correct by the chief's office. And I've seen the electric scooters become more popular. That's not so bad. I see the electric motorbikes now, like a dirt bike, they're electric. I see some two-cycle internal combustion dirt bikes ridden by kids that are not in middle school. And there's, there's nothing, there's no flag, there's no Waverly license plate. And that scares me because these children, I love children. They're not safe. The cars can't see them. The, they run around like it's free rein. Last night I had left work about 6 o'clock and the sheriff was parked right there by Kim Davidson's house west of our office, and these two girls came by in a four-wheeler. Four-wheelers are meant for one person. They had a flag on it, and the fat girl was, was the signaling person for some reason, I don't know why. But this happened right in front of the sheriff. He was sitting there and I go, first of all, four-wheelers, no flag for Waverly, no license plate for Waverly, nothing's been, no fee has been paid, and they're running around on a machine that should have one operator. And they were young, young, young ladies, and that really scared me. I don't want to let you hurt too. Safety's number one. I see these kids with these little electric motorbikes. Their mom and dad spent a lot of money, you got that for them. They think they're having, they're really, great gift to give their kid, but it might be the last thing they ever give them. They cross Highway 6, and they can go faster than a bicycle. And they're actually shouldn't be on there. They're, that's pedestrian sidewalk, and the crosswalk is for pedestrians, right? Not for motorized vehicles. It scares me. Do any gravel trucks blow through that? I've seen it happen. The other thing with, with the golf carts, and a mom with three little babies, one that's a month old here. If she was in a van driving around Waverly with her kids, running in the, in the, in the van being kids, she'd have a ticket violation, she'd get a, she'd get a citation and a thing that gone against her license. But she can do it with, with a golf cart, it offers no protection to anybody. And I just, little, you know, adults make bad choices, but little kids have no say in the matter. And it scares the ribbon stuff out of me that someone's going to get hurt. And it's the, I'm not sure all the details of the ordinance. I think the golf carts, you have to have the driver's license. Tune in if you're going to eat. They haven't had that school permit yet. So, and with little, little ones, that's what really scares me. I'm just, I sit there in front of my house watching them zing by and it's just, I'm probably the first person to mention this, but your comments are very well taken, thank you. That was, that seemed like a new trend that, you know, golf carts have to have a license plate and a flag. Go here, get a permit, right? Pay a fee. These little motor scooters and these things that had their note. It's just concerning to me, the safety needs to be addressed with those. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, let's go to claims for payment.
I would like to move to approve claims for payment in group A for a total of $1,341,577.72.
There's a bomb, there's a bomb in there in there. So that's why it's so big. Yeah. It's so big. Go ahead and call for a vote, please.
Motion carried, three to zero.
All right, let's go to consideration ordinances, consideration first reading of ordinance 2513.
I would like to move for consideration of the first reading of ordinance 2513, amending chapter 110 of the Waverly municipal code related to franchise fees.
And it's 2513, an ordinance of the city of Waverly, Nebraska, amending chapter 10 of the Waverly municipal code relating to business licensing franchises, C A T V payments.
Any discussion? All right, call for a vote. Three to five.
Motion carried, three to zero.
All right, consideration of amendment to the interlocal agreement between the city of Waverly and its suburban fire district.
I would like to move for consideration of amendment to the interlocal agreement between the city of Waverly, Nebraska and the Waverly suburban fire district.
Any discussion? Okay, call for a vote.
Motion carried, three to zero.
Okay, committee reports, Parks and Rec, Allison. All right.
We are still cutting down and removing that act that is in South Wayne Park. We turned a lot of this into mulch for future products. That's good, flag football and soccer registration is going to close this week. So this is a reminder to get signed up for flag football and soccer. Flag football's going to have a kickoff party at Baxter Quo de Lincoln on August 9th. Players should get their jerseys, get free shorts and different swag for playing. We're doing this because Baxter is an NFL level partner. They're donating tailgating tent, 150 player shorts, and NFL flag signs to Waverly. So that's pretty cool. They have fertilizer, actually trying to get rid of the ground squirrels on the field. For little guys. And then hoping for a pickleball tournament at the end of September, so look forward to that.
Is that being put on by the city or who's organizing the pickleball tournament?
Well, it looks like the city is. It's a big play. I don't know, pickleball tournament maybe on, oh, three weeks ago.
Awesome.
So.
Thank you. Public Works?
They assisted with fixing the electric sign on Highway 6 and providing an aerial lift for that. K2 continues to hook up individual homes to the new water main on Oak Lane and Oakstone. Should be hooked up.
I'm on the others.
You're on the others.
You're hooked up. You're hooked up.
Inspection with Olson Engineering at Waverly Ridge for their punch list items. They filled potholes on Everly Road at one hundred and forty-first street. They took out the solar lights at the east Waverly welcome sign. They haven't been working for quite some time and then they cleaned up some of the trees in the area growing around the sign. They cut weeds, grass with hand trimmers and cut out soccer trees on Cannon Gate Road ditch from Kennelworth to Old Field. I had a water main break on the old water main on Oak Lane, had to fix it as four homes were not yet hooked up to the water main. Sent layers to the nearby property owners for the ADA ramp installation that is planned to begin in July. They took down fourth of July banners and flags and they put culverts on bluff road for Waverly Ridge path for ADA area installation.
Great, thank you. Justerson's not here, but I do have some information. So they've had thirty goals thus far in July, that's over one per day. Got the new ambulance yesterday, guys picked it up yesterday, right? It's beautiful, smells brand new, just lovely. They've had a lot of standbys this month and they delivered the first baby in twenty years. It was great fun. That's HIPAA. So we can't tell you that, we're also on YouTube.
They have a write-up on that.
Well, there will be, but yes, with her consent. One of the things that she said is that the people that did respond, our responders did respond. Her feedback was she is very thankful because they listened to her. So, I mean, we know our volunteers are amazing, but our constituents also go to see it and they listen to her wishes and. Delivered the baby on scene, healthy, beautiful, big girl, so such an incredible job to these, I think, four, four of you? Yeah, four of you were there that morning and it was amazing, so very exciting. Anything else for the final? Okay, no, okay. Uh, economic development. Sue the administrator.
We had our budget workshop last, workshop last night with the, with H B E who helps us work on preparing all the documents for our budget. So preliminarily, we have our budget definitely in progress. We'll get certified valuation from Lancaster County approximately on August twentieth and at that point in time, we'll. Make the final touches on the budget and then we'll have our public hearings and everything that we are required to do in September. And then it has to be submitted to the county by the end of September, so. Stay tuned, there'll be more information coming out on the budget. We've been just kind of working on finalizing the papers for the aquatic center bond. Making progress on the soil testing for the fire station site. They did some soil testing also for the Cannon Gate Road project, so working through those kind of things.
Okay. Anybody have anything else? Okay, adjournment.
I move to the chairman.
Second.
Call for a vote. Motion carried, three to zero, we're adjourned at six fifty-four.